So we are going to reconvene to our regular scheduled board meeting. The Board of Commissioners just came out of executive session and the actions that we took in executive session included improving executive session minutes. We approved the minutes of the following executive sessions for January tenth, twenty twenty-three, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, Part One, and April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, Part Two. We then released all or part of, the other, next item was to release all or part of the executive session minutes. The Board has conducted the required semi-annual review of the unreleased minutes of the past executive sessions and concluded the need for confidentiality still exist for all of the unreleased or portions of the minutes except the following minutes or portions of minutes which no longer require confidential treatment and can be made available to the public for inspection. Those are the executive session minutes from January tenth, twenty twenty-three, and April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, Parts One and Two. And finally, the third item of business was to determine if records needed to be destroyed. The Board has authorized the destruction of the following executive session recordings, which are those of July seventh, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. I'm really having troubles reading numbers today. All right, so that concludes the report from executive session.
Thank you.
The next item is to accept the agenda.
I'm moved to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
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 All right, that passes. The next item of business is the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh-two, FY twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four combined budget and appropriation. So the, I need to...
Go ahead and read that first paragraph.
Okay, the person.
Record.
Per state law, a public hearing on the proposed budget and appropriation must be held prior to adopting the ordinance. Notice that the public hearing was made in a newspaper advertisement. The combined budget and appropriation ordinance has been available at the Darius Phibus Administration Building and on the UPD website for public review for at least thirty days prior to the hearing.
Now we're ready for the highlighted section.
All right, so the Board of, the Board of Park Commissioners of the Urbana Park District now opens a public hearing to receive public comments on the FY twenty-three, twenty-four combined budget and appropriation ordinance. Is there any member of the public who would like to make a statement during the public hearing regarding the FY twenty-three, twenty-four combined budget and appropriations ordinance? Seeing none. I'm going to declare the hearing closed. There was no public here.
Correct.
All right. Moving on to item six, public comment. And it, at this time, any member of the public may make a brief statement, but again, we have no public here, but I think we have some new staff introductions.
I think Derek Liebert's here with Keenan to do an introduction.
It's been a pleasure to introduce Keenan Portis. He's our new park planner. He's been with us for a little bit over a month. Keenan comes to us from the Urban Planning School at the University of Illinois. He actually took a class with Cara Dudek, our outgoing park planner, and has some firsthand experience with places like Delcum and Park. And so, happy to introduce Keenan. Keenan, anything you want to share about your first month here or your background?
It's been pretty good so far. I'm picking up more things to do, I'd say. Getting used to the work environment, ready to learn more, for sure, that's for sure.
Well, welcome.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you.
It's great to have you.
Been a great addition to staff. We're looking forward to his contribution, so everything looks very positive in the planning department.
He's already done a comprehensive report on park wayfinding. We're looking at doing a park wayfinding plan for Crystal Lake Park and has waded through the density of our ADA transition plan. Looking forward to meeting with our consultant later this month. And just been a great addition, really. Oh, and we did a neighborhood night's public input, and Keenan was an absolute natural. People were just flocking to him to provide feedback, so, yeah.
Okay.
I will say, I run over my first grant manual this week, in the past week, and it was interesting. But I got through it, so.
You ever wake up at two o'clock in the morning, break that out?
I know. After the first fifteen of them, you'll be a pro.
You'll be a pro.
Yeah, you will.
And you're the only one who will be, so.
Yeah, that's right.
I think, next up, Laura has an item as well.
Yeah, on behalf of Tim and I and the district as a whole, I want to present to the Board our Annual Government Finance Officer Association, GFOA, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the District. This was for the fiscal year that ended April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and this does mark twenty-two in a row. So, pretty proud of that.
Could we get a group photo, too? I bet Corky would want to take one for Mark to add to our collection of awards. Let me shut this door. Corner as we do. Either side, but that probably works.
We did their hands, though.
Operator error.
Yep. Get the smiles and the giggles out now. Thanks, Corky.
See, good thing I was held up a little bit there. Are you ready? One, two, three, and an extra.
Awesome. Thank you all. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura. Nice job.
Is that since its inception, twenty-two years in a row?
Yeah, I almost regretted saying that out loud.
The bar has been... Yes, right, understood.
Very proud of it, so.
It is.
All right, thank you. All right, so moving on to the next item is UPDAC appointments.
As mentioned, last month, we had approved a couple of our new members coming on, and we alluded we'd have another one this month than we do. And the staff would recommend that the Board would approve Ashley Sims as our new UPDAC member. I think you all received her information in the map and information in the board packet. Certainly, we can answer any questions, but staff looks forward to working with Ashley.
Do we have a motion?
I move to appoint Ashley Sims to serve a three, to serve a three-year term as part of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-six class for the Urbana Park District Advisory Committee UPDAC.
I second. All right, that's been moved and seconded. Any further questions or discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
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 Passes. Welcome Ashley to UPDAC.
Yes, we're excited, I should mention. I believe we have seventeen, which is tipping on the upward, so we're very excited, and it's a great group.
The next item of business is the Urbana Park District Advisory UPDAC Committee Report. We have a report, but if any of the Commissioners who were in attendance would like to provide any additional information, you can do so, or if not, that's fine.
I don't really have, I mean...
Yeah.
Okay. Very involved group, lots of great comments. They saw the same presentation we did about the new parks and the, that were developing, and they were, they were very engaged, very engaged, so.
Oh, right, yeah, because it was the Prairie Weaver Plan.
Right.
Right, yes, yeah, there was a lot of comment, and, yeah, this is, I really enjoy this UPDAC group there. They are definitely very engaged.
I would add that we had a meeting with Farnsworth and incorporated all of their input, so helping shape up the plans, so moving forward.
Great. All right, moving along to the consent agenda. So as a reminder, all these action items and information items on the, on consent agenda are considered routine by the Board and are going to be enacted by one motion. And if there's any item on the consent agenda that any Commissioner wishes to discuss, it can be moved from the consent agenda and acted on old or new business. So is there any item that Commissioner would like to pull from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, we need a motion for approving...
The Chair will read, read all the titles?
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you. I will read all the titles. So on the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes of the June sixth, twenty twenty-three study session meeting, approval of the minutes of the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting. Then we have monthly reports. This is, this includes the administration report, the planning and operations, recreation report, and then we have actions to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude. We have the approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, and action on resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-nine to enter into a tenant lease agreement for twenty-eight oh-eight South Ray Street, and then finally, the English fund spending memo.
I move to approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Right, sorry, never mind. That passes.
The GFOA award's been around since nineteen forty-five, so.
Okay, great. Actually, we need a roll call vote on that. I'm sorry. All right, we'll start with Roger.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, reports.
Reports. We'll start with our revenue and expenditures, as per usual. Page one is sum one. This is all funds excluding the capital improvement fund. What we're reviewing is for the prior twelve months, the budget for the current period and the preliminary unaudited results for two months ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. On page one, sum one, we can see revenues were four million, six hundred forty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four. This does include our second distribution of tax monies. That second distribution was one million, eight hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. Expenditures were one million, nine hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. Biggest marker here to note is that the first of our two interest payments on our Phil Bonds was paid during June, two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. This leaves us with a surplus after two months. That is in excess of revenues over expenditures paid of two million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Page two is labeled our sum two. This is the capital improvement fund, standing alone. Revenues for two months, two million, two hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars, with compliments of receiving the City ARPA funding of two million dollars. And this is going to look funny, but the expenditures does reflect, because this is a snapshot in time, a negative seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. How do we do that? We are in the middle of audit, which means that we're doing a lot of booking of items in April thirtieth, reversing May one, so forth. So at the time that this report is generated, you're seeing where we've got retainage booked and so forth, and so it's making that number look funny. What I can tell you is that actual activity during the month, revenues would be the two million, nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. Expenditures were six hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven. That still has us revenues higher than expenditures, good spot to be in, one million, four hundred and one thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. On this report, though, it does reflect revenues still exceeding expenditures, but the number is two million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. The page three, sum three, this is all funds district-wide. Just please note that the ending fund balance for the district as a whole, eighteen million, eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. The remaining summary reports are the individual funds reports for our three working funds, which is the General, Rec and Museum, and the last page is our Urban Indoor Aquatic Center. Moving to the treasures report. Again, the treasures report is the report of the amount of cash the district has on one day, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. All twenty-five funds listed down the left, where cash is invested, displayed across the top, and in the bottom right noting that the investments on this date total twenty-one million, two hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. Page two, the top section, lists the amounts that we have in actual interest payment counts of that twenty-one million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand of total dollars on hand. Thirteen million, sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-five is out in investments at varying rates. They're still fantastic. Bottom section of page two lists our inter-fund loans, noting that an additional fifty, or, excuse me, I wrote fifty in my notes, but it was, yeah, fifty thousand dollars was moved from REC to UIAC to cover until the school district, we receive, they've just been billed, but that we receive their funds. So it does say one hundred and fifty thousand between REC and indoor, but we've been moving in more each month. But we don't, we don't always get the money from the school until July anyway, so we're always doing that annually. Page three is the last section of the treasures report, and this lists the disbursements for the month of June. The vendor payments listed here will match the accounts payable report in the consent agenda, and total disbursements of funds, which includes payroll and vendors, is one million, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. And here you can see the bond transfer payment, the interest payment, excuse me, two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And I present to you the treasures report for audit.
Is there a motion on the treasures report?
I move to accept the treasures report for audit.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
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 All right, that passes.
All right, moving on to the total budget reports. The areas highlighted with the asterisk symbol are the areas of new activity. Again, while we're buttoning up FY twenty-three, we will see activity in both April and June columns. And starting with our twenty nineteen A budget, eighty thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars of revenue has been recognized for expenditures in relation to the donations that we've received from the foundation for the Health and Wellness Facility. Also received the two million dollars from the City of Urbana for ARPA funding, again, for health and wellness. The first amount was from April, the other one is from June. Under the expenditures, four thousand, six hundred and seven dollars, expense to Fair Grant for design work posted in June. We have eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars, expense to Open Road for construction number four, posting to April. Forty-five hundred dollars, expense to Kirby and Turner for sealing the Crystal Lake Park pillars, posting to June. Six thousand, seventy-one dollars, expense to Farnsworth, number five, on Weaver Fields planning, posted to June. Four thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars was expense to Farnsworth for design number six at Health and Wellness. That actually is in two budget lines in this, in the same budget, just two different GL lines, posting to June. Where are we at? Five hundred thousand dollars, expense to Core. This was for Core Number One. Again, this is split between two lines in the same budget. Two thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars, expense to Farnsworth, design number six, two GL lines, some in April, some in June, and the remaining to Core, twenty thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, posting to June.
I do have a question.
Yep.
And that is with the, with our receiving the two million from the city and the half million from the county.
We have not received the half million.
Okay, but we have from the, we have from the city. Where does that put us in terms of, in terms of the need for short-term borrowing at this point?
Puts us farther down the line.
So we have operating funds to pay bills.
We have more operating dollars so we can last longer before we need to...
Good.
And when do we expect to receive the five hundred thousand from the county?
I believe they just approved it at their last...
Yeah, that's what the five hundred thousand dollars invoice was, so we're submitting that for reimbursement.
Yeah.
So we're going to, I mean, this is just on the same line as the five hundred thousand, Core Number Four, will go against the county's money?
Correct.
Okay.
Payment for the seal, correct?
Yes, the building.
Okay.
Our strategy is to try to lump some pay so we can have quarterlies and things that drag it out, and then we make sure we don't have to return any money if somebody said we had to.
Good strategy.
Yeah, this budget's going to be fun.
Right.
Coming up. Moving on to the twenty twenty-three budget, this gets easier and easier. We did recognize five hundred dollars of revenue received under tributes and donations. And in the expenditures category, we had eight hundred and fifty-three dollars expensed for some trees in April and two hundred and sixty-one expensed in June for a plaque, all under tributes and donations, and three hundred and ninety-five dollars for miscellaneous supplies for our construction crew projects, posting to June. And at the very bottom of this budget, we have the final payment to Row Mine for the cottage painting, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars, posting to June. Twenty twenty-two budget. No new revenues, under expenditures, three hundred and seven dollars for trees, under tributes and donations. Also fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars for sea engineering, construction engineering, number two, for the Crystal Lake Broadway ITAP project, that also posted to June. Twenty twenty-one, no new revenues, under expenditures, tributes and donations, one thousand, five hundred and eight dollars for some more trees, that posted to April. Eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars, using, this is our piece of the UIAC shared capital expenses. Specifically, this was the activity pool pump was replaced. We have outdoor learning pavilion, using our museum fund transfer. There was twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars expensed for seal coating and striping the, over at the Nature Center Coastal Lake Parking Lot, and eight hundred and sixty-one dollars to rekey at the outdoor learning pavilion. Yep, that's all on that budget. Twenty twenty, there was no activity during June or additionally in April. And the last page, twenty nineteen, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars was expensed for our ADA consultant. So twenty twenty was the only budget that had no activity. And I will send it down the end of the line to Andy and Derek.
Okay, pull up some pictures again. Just have a few slides tonight. Last board meeting, we started with health and wellness. Nobody was at the site. This is the preliminary site logistics plan for construction that I showed last time. Since that meeting, Core is at the site, so this image on the left was from the first week, where they were actually moving dirt. Stark is their contractor for that portion. And then off on the right's pretty close to how it looks as of today, where they're putting some base down, which will end up being a portion of our parking lot. And Core, next week, will, is hoping to have their trailer on-site, which should be in this area here. And then they will also be able to put the construction fencing up, they're hoping for next week. And then a couple other angles. One, here is along Washington, so here's their temporary construction entrance. This will be the entrance as well to the actual site in the future, once we have a building. And one of the first items that they accomplished was taking out the median at Washington, so this will help with a lot of the construction traffic. We won't have trucks going down and turning around at the school district, and then, you know, maybe get some complaints on that. So now they went ahead and took that out, so it kind of makes turning into the site for construction traffic a lot easier. And then this is just pulled back a little bit further from that construction entrance, now looking towards the north. You can see this will be basically the drive to our parking lot here, and then the building is staked out in this area. Staff, we've had a meeting last week with Farnsworth. We're still working on some soft cost FFNE items. Did a review of some furniture. We plan on having a bid out for furniture sometime this winter. We're kind of reviewing some of those costs and trying to reduce some of the expenses that were associated with that from a preliminary estimate that was given to us a few weeks ago. I did want to mention a small design change. If you recall, as part of the bid, we had a alternate that was for this canopy that goes, here's from the, the front entrance, the front door, and this is looking from Washington, and it actually goes all the way down the side of the building here. We rejected that alternate. It was around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and our plan was to review other options and maybe be able to provide the same sort of canopy structure, but potentially reduce that cost. And we're in progress for a change order, which basically is going to be a structure, a canopy that looks like this up here from Madison Public Library. And then we also reduced the length of it. So we're keeping it over the main entry doorway, but really just keeping it in the vestibule. So this is more of the seating area for the lobby. This is the vestibule. We've kind of reduced, taken this portion out. We're, like I said, working through a change order. We're getting it ready for the pre-engineered building, where they'd be able to attach this to it. But it's looking like we're probably going to save a pretty significant amount of money by going this route. I think the preliminary estimate from Core was around forty or fifty thousand dollars for this, so that's pretty significant. And really doesn't have a ma, a big impact as far as the use and functionality of it, since we're keeping it over that main entry as well. So I want to make sure we got that shared to the Board. Moving to Crystal Lake, last meeting, I said there was a few items left over. One was the garbage enclosure. Here is that, our new dumpster enclosure on the West Lake House lot, looks very nice. We also have a railing that will then go on top of this wall that we're still looking at doing here in the next month or so, hopefully. And we also had a railing installed along the road itself. During the design process, we selected kind of a timber railing to keep kind of a park aesthetic. And so this goes basically from the sanitary bridge and then all around. Here's the triangle with the hill that goes towards the lake house, and it stops probably around this tree here, I believe. The contractor did have some extra material that we've opted to keep and we're storing at our storage site. We've been thinking that maybe when the sanitary district wraps up with their project, that'll remove this bridge. We may need a little bit extra railing here. The primary purpose for this railing, when we, you know, wanted to put it in, was to help protect from vehicles, bikes. I've seen a lot of skateboarders going down this hill as well, especially when we get any sort of inclement weather, to be able to help guide people away from going into the lake.
There, the day when the skateboarder had to pull his skateboard out of the lake.
There you go.
And then, last thing, I just wanted to touch on Crystal Lake Rehab Project overall, and, and one of the main goals that we had with that project was water quality. And this is really the third year where we can evaluate what's happening with the lake. And, you know, as you remember, in years past, we would have, at this time, coverage of water meal. It'd be a green carpet all over the lake, pretty much every day throughout the summer. So this was last year, this is this year, I took last week.
Gorgeous.
So it's just kind of a, an acknowledgement, and, you know, we're still monitoring it. We still are under contract with a lake management company each year. We're still doing some nutrient testing. We'll be doing our second water test this week, just monitoring how those nutrients are rea- We'll be doing our second water test this week, just monitoring how those nutrients are reacting to everything and, and how that could change with anything we see with, as far as algae or nuisance weeds. But for the most part, for the last two years, it's really been very impressive what's happened there at the lake. So I just kind of wanted to bring that to the board's attention and be able to discuss that, well, we're still doing work on the water quality itself. We've had two ALM applications this year, we'll have one more and we'll look to continue doing nutrient reduction activities with that contractor in, in future years, so we can try to keep it looking like this.
Hold on to that photo, that's a really good one.
Yeah, the plantings are phenomenal.
Oh, they are.
There's an aspect of it that like, I just, you know, I, in my, like, that's not what Crystal Lake looks like in my mind.
Right.
And like, but that's what Crystal Lake looks like and it's awesome.
It's, if you haven't a chance to go out to Crystal Lake, now is a very nice time to do so. I was on the stone outcropping along the road here, getting that picture, and yeah, it was kind of hard to keep my camera on the water when.
It's just beautiful. On the water quality, as I recall, it was during really hot, dry periods and we had the worst algae blooms.
Yeah.
Came through a pretty dry, hot period without any of that, so.
And June's usually the worst month, and June was probably about the driest month we've had too. And I've seen some filamentous algae on different kind of little corners, I guess I'd call them. And that wasn't as typical as we had had in the past, but as far as having any sort of noticeable green coverage of the lake, it's been minimal. So it's, it's a kind of a nice success story that we've had there, and I hope it, it keeps up. Unless there's any questions, that's all I had to bring to the board tonight.
Are we going to be putting up any kind of signage at Prairie Park, letting people know what construction's about?
Signage around the fence, correct? So the construction fence will have a sign around it?
Board up there now.
Is there one?
But, yeah, it's, it's not large, but they're, they're kind of keeping the construction fencing out to give room for the, for Stark to move all their big equipment while they're doing a lot of the earthwork. And once they finish up, that's when they'll start putting in that construction fencing, which should be next week, and they'll have some signage associated with that as well.
Just, we're, I'm still getting asked.
Yeah, we want to tell our story.
Right, if we had a picture up there that said, this is what's coming, I think that will excite people.
While we're on it, what thoughts do you all have about promotional stuff throughout? I know we've talked about some items, maybe we could share with the board what we're thinking now.
Sending some stuff to marketing, we've got some drone photos of before and after of the ball fields. And that would be a sort of thing people would be interested in, I think, so we'll start giving Mark some footage.
Our hope is to keep the public, you know, involved as we go, and certainly that would help lead up to the opening, so.
And Core will have a webpage that I think we can link to as a landing page on our site as well. We actually have a meeting with them tomorrow, that might be a good thing to bring up and ask the status of that.
That's what I was gonna say, and you were, we're hoping to have a link on our website where checkout, progress.
But whenever people do ask, then we can direct them to the website, hey, there should be some new updates and photos and things.
Awesome, thank you.
Keep that lively and keep people engaged.
Absolutely.
All right, moving on to the executive director.
Okay, a few things, starting out, as we do in the summer, we have updates on the Crystal Lake Pool.
Yeah.
Or any comments or any stories?
Yeah, so I got one big story, is we've had a lot of network outages since we've gotten new phones. So the good news is our overall numbers from cost or revenue is, is better. But from the members, we've not been able to track very well. In 2022, we had 4,803 scans, so that's our pool passes when they come in. So that doesn't affect our dollars or anything like that, it's just the number of people going in. And then Leslie, who's on vacation, bless her heart, she sent me this information today, but she sent me 20 for 23, that the number was 1,469, I'm like, whoa, that can't, can't be right. So we've had a lot of, that's, when it scans, that's how we keep track of the numbers. So we've had a lot of issues with that. But from the daily membership standpoint, so when they come in and they pay cash at the gate, again, what I'm talking about with issues doesn't affect that. So in 2022, we had 19,059 visitors. And so far in 23, same time period, 19,284. Total revenue in 2022 at this point was 172,917.50, and we are at 173,371.50, so about a thousand more now. So obviously, the membership numbers are messed up and I wasn't gonna have Leslie take time out of her Disney trip and figure out what the heck was going on with that. So, but all in all, we did really well last year and we're, we're keeping pace this year.
An update next month too, with any new numbers?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll update. I'm not sure we'll gain those numbers back, since the system's been messed up as far as how many passes have gone through unless something was entered incorrectly when she was looking for it, but we'll.
Obviously, the good news, meeting our numbers and our budgets and now the weather's been great, it's been hot and a lot of sunny days and not a lot of rain. So as we know, that's the other side of the story, if you get challenges, that affects your bottom line, but so far, so great.
Yeah, we, we did have two unpredictable days, one was the air quality day where we had to shut down, and another one was the storm that we had to shut down. The next day, we were down quite a bit too after the storm because of getting everything up and going, but.
And I hear an radiator swim team is also, still, is it still high enrollment?
It is, I don't know the exact number, but we do, we do have a good number of individuals in it still.
Roger Stafford report, they haven't noticed the dove nesting there, but we're gonna check and make sure.
Who said it again?
Joseph reports he hasn't noticed the dove nesting there, but we're gonna check and make sure.
If, if he got close to it, he would have noticed it.
We would have heard about it.
Yes.
So, I'm saying no.
Continuing on, as you know, we had quite a storm, I think we were talking prior to the meeting starting about that. And certainly staff just did it, as they always do, an amazing job. Interesting, the news gazette kind of did a follow-up thank you story, I didn't know if you're following those, but they had reached out to all the local agencies, asked for photos and names of people that have been involved with the cleanup. And notice, I think yesterday's paper, Brad Johnson, our Brad, was in the paper and showing him at work at one of our sites, so really pleased. Derek, did you have anything to add about, it's a big story, it's probably still going on?
I mentioned it in the board report, we did have, you know, some damage we're working through, getting estimates for. And, but, but, you know, miraculously, the tree that fell in the Crystal Lake playground somehow managed to avoid most major equipment, just a single swing set that we're replacing for about 6,000 dollars, so that's just, just great, great fortune. One of the, the overhead door at Hickory and, and the pole barn actually blew off the tracks. We're working on getting a second quote for that one, and that one came in a little bit high. But our staff just really did amazing, amazing job, it was, it was, it wasn't just grounds, there's facilities out helping as well. And it was just great to see that the teamwork as they tackled the projects. The worst of it's addressed so far, we'll be working on it for a while, but we've gotten to the point now where we can be kind of more measured in our activity.
I always think of our years of applying hazard tree dollars, capital dollars, and I'm sure that helps. Anytime you can reduce hazards, you can imagine reduce hazards that multiply as, as storms hit, so. Speaking of storms, obviously, the air quality was mentioned, one of the things, you know, we hope, maybe we won't have that situation again, but if there's more wildfires, we will. We kind of talked with Champagne Park District, you know, for weather and the winter events, we have a better approach. You know, we have a few better standards of how to make calls, it's hard, it's still hard. But I think we have a team approach, and we think, working with Champagne Park District, because primarily, like in summer situations like that, we would be hosting camps, all the programs going, and so knowing when to close and shut down or keep kids in. We just agreed, the only information we have are those federal maps, those weather maps of the color, red, purple. And so we should probably adhere to those and probably communicate and then act accordingly, so that you don't have one pool open and one closed, or, you know, it's confusing to the public, is it concerning or? And I, again, want to add, it's very difficult, because it's a new phenomenon to us. We've seen it happen other places in the world, but we don't have a lot of experience with communicating it, getting it, people to take it, you know, really serious, and also for folks that are very concerned already about maybe their kids or, you know, family or adults involved in programs. So we're learning, but so if you hear comments, let us know, and we'll continue to work on that, make sure we.
The National Weather Service has a pretty good summary of what each level means.
Right, and, you know, we just kind of noticed or assumed not all the public's tracking, and so, hey, we're in a purple, we're doing, that made me, could be meaningless to some people. So hopefully, it'll be something that we don't have, happen again, but if it does, we hope to respond well. All right, continuing on, probably two groups, we just announced we want to meet with probably the UPDAC study group and the policy study group. We have some planning for UPDAC programs for the rest of the year, we want to get on their way, so we'll be reaching out. Nothing immediate, but we do want to get together. And for the policy, probably should start really looking at working on our e-bikes. There's been more comments about that, I think there's going to be a mailbag question. But if you recall, we started a while ago, when, you know, we started tracking it, I think we hosted a group meeting and we found, you know, everyone's on a different page for different reasons. And so the idea of having a, you know, consistent policy across the community, at least at this point, may not happen in that way. But we want to continue and thought it'd be good for us to really come at it from an ADA perspective, because there are a variety of accessible and, you know, electric and battery operated devices, and we want to promote accessibility. Want to get some better handle on what type of standards, you know, do we apply? I think in general, we're supportive, people are, people are already using them. And so, you know, do we want to ignore it or pretend it doesn't exist, or embrace it and figure a way how we can manage better? So we'll be calling on that group, and it may take a while for us to develop a policy we're comfortable with. We'll probably review some others and, you know, talk with UPDAC and try to get some input.
Are there still most of the impact of e-bikes from the VO, the ones that people are?
I would say so, I think we're seeing more personal individuals by their own, but they're probably promoting, you know, the majority of it at this point.
And we had talked at one point, like they have, there are ways for them to sort of throttle speeds. Are we still having those in certain areas?
Talked to them specifically about our parks, but I think that would be something we'd want to engage as part of our process. You know, what measures could we, you know, place to help control speed? And speed might be a way we sort of focus, you know, I think all of us probably in the room tonight would agree, you would likely have conflicts on your traditional pedestrian paths if you had high rate speed, electric, you know, motorized, you know, vehicles on your paths. So trying to find a reasonable speed. The other comment we had in, recently with staff is, hey, aren't peddlers on bikes speeding too fast through Meadowbrook already? Well, the answer is yes, they have been since day one at that park and others and other park districts. So the enforcement side, I'm getting to that, that's going to be our challenge. So why create a policy if you can't enforce it? And I just think that's probably one of those things, you know, we're, we're gonna have to promote, stay on top of, remind, but it may be difficult to get any sort of legal enforcement or, you know, I'm sure probably our role won't be, you know, banning speeding cyclists through the parks if you can catch them.
Sorry, my only, my only thing that I'm really considering about this is that there, I think there's some, a distinction to be made in that I would say that electric bikes are more commonly used as transportation, whereas like your regular pedal bike is a mix of transportation and recreation. And I, so I think that is something to consider, especially like, you know, if we are doing limiters like through, through VO, you know, throttling speeds, that it's like, hey, well, you know, I, more often than not, you know, I don't think that people are gonna rent a VO to ride around Meadowbrook, but maybe, but like, you know, I think it's more a consideration of, this is something that I use to get to Meadowbrook versus riding it around Meadowbrook, because technically, right, you'd be paying to, to ride it around, you're not necessarily getting like the aerobic aspect out of it. So it, I don't really have like a clear.
Right.
I, I think it's just something to, to keep into consideration, right?
And they aren't dropping, it's not a site yet, right, for, I mean, not only just e-bikes, but also the scooters. We haven't seen that as, I don't know how we can, I don't know how they get permission, if they work with the city, it's mostly on, I mean, I see them in downtown Urbana quite a bit and obviously on campus.
See them in Blair a lot.
Yeah, in Blair, okay.
Yeah, there's, there's one in Lomond right now.
But I mean, like as a regular space, right, where they sort of collect and reposition, yeah.
Right, because yeah, there's like kind of a, there's like a dispo spot, like in downtown Urbana where at the iron post, yeah, so.
And back to Cedric's point, just want to add, you know, I think, my sense is there's a, already probably a general assumed, hey, can we just all be considerate and keep our speeds reasonable and, you know, stay on the road if you're comfortable and need to go faster to work or if you're leisurely, but that's the hard part, because not everybody, you know, follows those, you know, rules. And so, again, trying to come up with a policy that, you know, favors people getting out and using increasing age-friendly opportunities for people to stay engaged with, you know, bike activities. But then we probably have to learn a whole new bunch of things about ADA. And if somebody needs any sort of mobile assist or, you know, and how do you differentiate? And my basic understanding is you can't go up and ask that person, you know, is this an ADA, you know, that's a poor form. So I, I guess I'm suggesting there's many gray areas, and so working together over time as a wider community to get to a place that we encourage and embrace and, you know, include everyone is where we want to go. That all sounds nice, but there'll always be people that won't follow rules and maybe give that a, a bad look. And so we're, we're just gonna give it our best effort and jump in and try to be reasonable and reset the tone.
I'm wondering if we could have larger signs with respect to both speeding and also letting, as you're coming up from behind people, letting them know, because there's been so many close calls that, that we've seen or experienced at Meadowbrook.
What I should have said, and I didn't say, when we poll other districts and other, you know, of our, you know, contemporaries, you know, I'm not sure what we'll find, we may find we're more open and other places are banning. So I, I just don't know, we know there's more progressive communities that are embracing it. So, you know, we think of Urbana more in that vein, and so we'll probably follow that lead. But I guess I'm trying to say ahead of time, not everyone's gonna like this, and we may hear from people. And I'm assuming when we talk to UPDAC, we'll hear some real concerns. I know Champagne Park District listened to a lot of comments and the walking public, you know, had a lot of concerns. So again, wouldn't be the first controversial issue we've been involved with, and so we'll take it and it's part of our, you know, role in recreation. But let's see what we can do and how we can enforce it and communicate it in a way that, you know, moves us in the right direction.
I don't know if you all recall, but when Jennifer Skolsky, our ADA consultant, presented, she talked about our current ADA vehicle policy. And she thought it should be strengthened to distinguish between like e-bikes, and she's seeing more and more agencies that are trying to figure out how to tease us out. She, she didn't want to provide any sort of boilerplate guidance on it, but she really wanted us to, to discuss it, think about what's appropriate for Urbana. Keenan is gonna be doing some research, contacting other communities to see where they're at. One of the better ones I see is in Bloomington, Indiana, they do have dismount zones. They have a rail trail that goes through downtown Bloomington, it's a dismount zone, there's some other places like that. But they also have permissive areas where they allow them as well. So I look forward to, to working on it, and the mailbag question, I think was just a reminder, we've got some work to do.
Yeah, so I think we'll probably start hearing some things and I, you know, I would imagine whoever responds will see a mixed bag of, you know, approaches. But still reminding folks in the US, it's a newer interest. You know, I think in Europe, it's really taken off fast as we hear. But it's still, you know, especially in the Midwest, it's probably still, you know, a newfangled idea. But as a campus community, I think we have an obligation to, you know, work with our community to provide as many modes of transportation as we can. Certainly is a favor to recreation, you know, if we had more people biking than driving cars, we'd be moving in the right direction, I think, in this community. And we just talked about climate change and fires and all of that, so they are linked topics, you know, from, from that perspective. But just wanted to kind of put those two study groups on notice.
They do have some dismount places on the Monon Trail through Indianapolis.
Right.
And they have really positive signs, so, I mean, I'm gonna be there in a couple weeks, I can take some pictures.
These do, yeah, send them on.
Because they're not negative at all, you don't feel like, oh, gotta go.
I know, another, right.
They're very positive.
Good, good, it's all encouraging. All right, I think I mentioned that, just wanted to compliment Amazing Jettie Rhodes Day, just had a wonderful turnout for that. Celebrated the peace letters at the summer, or spring camp, UPD's spring camper. Celebrated the peace letters at the summer, or spring camp, UPD's spring campers did, it was beautiful. And checked with Janet before the meeting tonight, and we estimated about 1,500 people attending.
Oh, fantastic.
So, that's just fantastic numbers. And, you know, I think it's going to continue to work in that way. Corky reported that we had our first midnight basketball at Brookins, it was packed. So, we're super, super excited about that news. You know, we've been working on that for a long time. Kudos to Reverend Comer and all the volunteers that come out and help with that. And I asked Corky the obvious question, soon when we get our new facility built, we'll slide that program and would have better options. And the answer is yes. So, we're very happy about that. Let's see, just want to draw your eyes to the cool tree carving at the Needa Purvis Nature Center. It's in the nature playground, if you haven't seen it. We had our arts and culture meeting today. And Savannah went outside with her phone, and we had some live images with the artist and could kind of see and hear what's going on. So, encourage you to go take a look at that. And then last, go ahead.
That was reposted at least a dozen and a half times, just on my Facebook page, so.
Great, wonderful.
People really were taken by that, yeah.
Yeah, that's great. And that seems serendipitous, you know. We, we kind of talked about an idea like that in the early, and then the perfect tree sort of emerges right on the right site, in the right spot. So, good opportunity, way to go staff for, for that effort. Just wanted to pass around, I thought this would need, I don't usually promote or favor any particular program we do, but Nature Center's doing this really creative idea, and it involves collections and then making shadow boxes. And, you know, typically, park districts don't promote a collective approach, you know, or don't, don't pick. But there's some really creative ways of how to collect materials. And so, stay tuned, it will be, I think, on exhibit at the Nature Center. And then someone will win the, the big, you know, prize. So, it's a really cool event. Just kudos to all the creativity. And again, it's in every department, but that one just caught my eye. Last comment, we looked at the covers for the new, I think, fall program guide. That'll feature the, the selected winners for the sculpture photos. So, stay tuned, you'll, you'll be amazed at the images. That'll be on the new brochure. That's all I had. Can I answer any questions?
I think my only thing that really like piqued my interest that, or that, something that piqued my interest was this multilingual learners thing. I remember when I was a counselor at the summer arts camp. I think that we had like, right, like, we had a fair number of like non-native speakers and that. And it was always like a, a difficult aspect of that job of like, you know, communicating with those children. So, something like this, like really, I'm, I'm excited about that, you know, it really, that's like one of the amazing parts about living in this community. Is that there's so many people from, you know, so many different cultures. So, I just, you know, really, I'm excited to see programs like this, and I hope to see more of it in terms of just like specifically engaging with our, like, multilingual children, or children that don't speak English as their, as their first language. You know, they, at the end of the day, will end up experiencing a different summer camp than our native speaking children do. And so, providing opportunities to bridge that gap is like fantastic.
It is. And I have to just, you know, expand just a moment on that. You know, it's so exciting looking at, years ago, and we didn't have that focus here, and, you know, I'm sure there were other fine points of the programs. But if you can just imagine someone's quality of their experience, if they had a connection or an opportunity like that, it's, it's just phenomenal. It is, and it's, it's very noteworthy. And I think we learned in our last study, you know, communication, different languages, receiving information. It's really critical. It's probably makes a difference of I'm coming or I'm not coming.
Right.
You know, and the message that carries with that. So, thanks for noticing that.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. So, next is the president's report, and he's not here. But also just a note that you have a handout with all sorts, reminding us that we have a, no, August 1st study session. Have we had consensus to move yet the August 8th?
Yes, I think everyone agreed and.
That'll be August 15th.
Paul is going to be sending out, our August meeting will be the 15th.
Okay. And then just a variety of dates and events for our calendars. So, a lot of great things going on. All right, so liaison reports, finance study group, Roger.
We, we talked about the possibility of additional funding for health and wellness. We'll hear or not hear more about that, and also additional funding for Prairie Play, everything else you guys know about, so.
The UPD policy study group, we have not met.
But according to Tim, we may meet soon.
Exactly. All right, Urbana Parks Foundation, Roger.
The, the foundation met, did not, did not meet this, this month. I want to emphasize that was because we had a lot of people on vacation, not because their liaison has trouble with hundreds, thousands and millions. So, just wanted to clarify.
And then UPDEC planning study group.
Well, according to Tim, we will.
We'll be meeting soon. We're very excited about meeting soon. Great, great, great.
We are too.
All right, so we have no old business, no, sorry. We do have old business, which was to receive the budget book.
Yes.
We don't have any action we need to take on that.
Correct. Laura, did you have any updates?
I, I just asked Andy to pop up just a couple of quick slides, just as a reminder to the board, new member, anybody who may be enjoying this at home. Just wanted to kind of explain a little bit about our process for getting the budget together. It's an extensive annual process, involves input at all levels within the district. And it can begin as early as November. If you go to slide two, Andy. It can begin as early as November, real traction really, it really takes a whole, you know, February and March. Budgets are prepared at the department level, forwarded to the business office for processing during April. Once we have our final tax extension, we know what that number, what the, our number's going to be. The budget's prepared in a preliminary format, released to the Board of Commissioners during the April board meeting. During the April study session, ahead of that board meeting, the staff gets together, you know, to talk about the major changes that are going to be in the budget for the coming year. And while the budget does tend to be pretty stable, you know, year over year, we did talk about a few key points, and they're the ones that we talk about every meeting. But we're talking a lot about health and wellness, you know, and how, how we're going to fund it. And that's a huge impact on our FY '24 budget. So, that's been a major concentration. Capital wise, you know, we're, we budgeted for improving our security systems, both camera and alarm. So, I know Derek's working hard on getting that going already, so that's already working. And then during June, we finalized the budget, the budget appropriations order, ordinance is prepared in draft form. Again, distributed to the Board of Commissioners, posted at the administration office for the public inspection. Notice is published in the news gazette, notifying the public of the ordinance being discussed and adopted in July. July, budget book is prepared and approved, budget and appropriations ordinance is then filed to the county clerk. That's kind of our process. And then on the third slide, I just wanted to highlight, you know, a couple of key things. You know, our increase in property taxes, the reason why we're getting a lot at this time. Increase in the CPI, you know, it's 5%. We haven't seen that in, I don't even know, a long time. We did get informed that TIP 2 expired December 31st. That brought approximately $19 million of EAV associated with that, so that kind of pumped us up a little bit. EAV is 697,074,134. That's about a 9.9% increase over previous year. And then I just showed what, what was last year's by fund. So, $8,29,000, and what we're expecting to get is $8,976,000. That's a 10%, 10.6% increase, so. All things that help our budget, obviously, and we have a great need for it. So, that's all I had for slides. But I also wanted to share with you actually, in the budget book, if anybody is wanting a few specifics right out of the budget book, pages five through 15 are our district and departmental goals, if you guys haven't looked through those yet. Pages 22 through 27, this is all the various collection of tax rate information for Urbana. Page 28 is a rolling 35-year history of the park district's assessed valuations. Pages 29 and 30, this is our sum three, you know, that we talk about at each of our monthly meetings. It's an all funds summary, and then the data's gathered and we put in a little bit of a graph format. Pages 31 and 32, this is our sums one and two, financial reports presented at our monthly meeting. But this is reported in the annual budget book with some additional graphs, again, for visual representation of.
Yeah, I think it's really interesting, interesting that our tax monies and grants are almost. And I suspect this year is a little bit atypical.
It is, yeah.
An anomaly.
Yes.
It would be great.
I know, if it were always that much.
Good up team.
Yeah, but yes, great work.
Keep that going, okay?
Also on page 31, though, is the very first data line there is our tax monies. And that's 74.7% or 74.70 of our operating revenues, obviously comes from property taxes. And second largest source being donations, 10.27%. And the largest expense for, in the expense sections for UPD is our full-time salary, so 30.03%. Followed by contractual services and our debt payments at 21.89% and 17.03% respectively. So, those are just kind of the key pieces of that. And then on page 33, this is the budget appropriations ordinance, previous year against this year. So, at a glance, you can see kind of how we do year over year. And the remaining pages are literally just each of our funds in summary form, in detail form for all of our, for all of the funds. So, unless anybody had any specific questions about the budget, I just kind of wanted to introduce it a little bit and.
Thank you, Laura.
Get Laura on board maybe a little bit.
One of the numbers I was noticing is the, when I did budgeting at the park district, is that salary, that's flip-flopped. So, the part-time and full-time salaries, the part-time salaries used to be a bigger number than the full-time. And I think that shows.
Yeah.
How we've increased what we do and how we can do so many amazing things by having more full-time staff.
Right.
That just struck me, I'm like, I, I need to go back, I don't have any old budgets. But I remember that number always being bigger for part-time.
It's a good point, Laura, because I know when I started at this, when you still worked here, we did have many, many seasonal and the old model of, hey, we're kind of a seasonal operation as opposed to year-round, high-quality services. So, I agree with that.
You can see the difference.
Professionalized the, the whole outfit, I think.
I would say too, unfortunately, with COVID, we've had to become more efficient because there's not as many part-time staff.
That's true.
That's a good point.
Available. So, we had to find other ways to make things work.
Right. Yep. Thank you, Laura.
Yes, thank you, Laura. All right. Our next item of business is that we need to take action on ordinance 2023-02 FY 2023-24 combined budget and appropriation. This is required by state law, that we must approve and take formal action to essentially adopt our budget.
I move.
I can just tell you that the draft was provided last month, and there were no changes, so.
Great.
I move to approve ordinance 2023-02 combined budget and appropriation.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the point? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes. All right, seeing as we have no new business, we can move on to comments from commissioners.
Just great job by the park district on these closures.
Absolutely.
I know they're hard decisions, but you got the word out. People were not displeased, that I heard. I mean, they were, they were happy that we took the actions that we did. So, kudos to the staff for that, especially pivoting again, which maybe COVID helped us with that too. But I think we've always been good at pivoting.
We have.
And I would agree that this will not be the last time we see a deratio or a warning of, you know, the air quality. So, nice job, guys.
I just add, Tim did a good job of explaining, you know, the difficulties of it. But the other piece of that is, what are parents going to do if their kids can't go to camp?
Right.
You know, and when it's a sudden call like that, you know, you really got to weigh out all the individual pieces of those decisions. And so, it was very, we were on the phone a lot.
All right, I think we can adjourn.
All right, thanks all, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Or before.